Okay, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. Before we get started, before we start a meeting, I'd like to welcome Reverend Calvin Odenner. Reverend Odenner here, yes. From the Morning Star Chapel in Milton, Georgia, to lead us to invocation, and we appreciate you being here.
Good evening. Please bow your heads. Lord, you call each one of us to be your disciples. Please awaken justice and judgment in our hearts this evening as we work towards what is best for our community and each person we serve. Give these men and women the courage to follow your ways. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Odenner. We appreciate you being here. Now, to follow the government rules, I'll start our meeting officially. So, I'd like to call the regular meeting of Milton City Council from Monday, October 7th, 2013, to order. And if the city clerk could please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll after September 7th, 2013. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or a general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large?
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Again, glad to see everybody here. Welcome tonight. Looks like we might have a little school credit or something going on here. And I, as I offer to any kids that are here, and hopefully you learn a little bit and all that, but if you guys feel free to email me with your name and address and all, and I'd be glad to do a letter or whatever, you know, stating that you were here and all that, so you kind of throw in your file. So, just feel free to do that, and we're glad you're here. City clerk, please call the next item.
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 13-221.
I would like to add, under Presentations, under Reports and Presentations, one other item. It's okay, just like to add a little presentation for Lance, so if everybody's okay with that.
No, you may have a hard time on that.
Is there anything else? Anybody on the agenda? Okay. I'll get a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the meeting agenda as prepared by staff with the addition of a presentation to Lance Large under Reports and Presentations.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion of second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have any public comments, Sudi?
We do not have general, but we do have one under new business.
Okay. I'm gonna just go ahead and read the rules and all that. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or the first presentation from the public or the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone, stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks, so we know we don't have any general public comment, but when we move on. So, if we can move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item is approval of the September 9th, 2013 Work Session Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 13-222. Next, approval of the September 16th, 2013 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes, Agenda Item Number 13-223. Next item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Q4, Inc., to provide right-of-way services for intersection improvements at the Hopewell Road Birmingham Road Intersection, Agenda Item Number 13-224. Next, approval of the acquisition of a 0.529 acre remainder parcel at 13795 Birmingham Highway from Margaret E. Densdale for a total purchase price of $30,000, Agenda Item Number 13-225. Our next item is approval of an addendum to the Construction Services Agreement between the City of Milton and Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., for the FY13 Road Reconstruction and Resurfacing Projects, Agenda Item Number 13-226. Next, approval of professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Atkins North America, Inc., to provide preliminary engineering concept phase for Crabapple Streetscape Project, Agenda Item Number 13-227. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Pond and Company for State Route 9 Alpharetta Highway at Bethany Bend Intersection Concept Study, Agenda Item Number 13-228. Approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Industrial Facility Solutions, LLC, for stormwater structure repairs on Mountain, Doris, and Darby Roads. This is Agenda Item Number 13-229, our final item this evening. Approval of the Audit Engagement Letter with Malden and Jenkins, LLC, to audit the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2013, Agenda Item Number 13-230.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as read by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion of second for approval on the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. If the city clerk could please call the next item.
Our next item is a presentation of state certification award to the City of Milton Police Department. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood and Chief Billy Grogan of the Dunwoody Police Department.
Okay. If Chief Grogan will hold one second, let me read this out first. The Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, Georgia Law Enforcement Certification Program, has recertified the Milton Police Department. In order to state, in order for the state to certify or recertify a law enforcement agency, the agency must meet a set of 129 law enforcement standards, which are reviewed by a team of assessors from across the state. Milton Police Department hosted the assessors in July of 2013 and received the approval for recertification last week. To complete the agency's recertification, a team of assessors was on-site for two days reviewing agency policies, practices, and procedures. The assessment is an in-depth look at everything the agency does, ranging from records, information, and management, equipment used, officer training and practices, and to training, policy, and procedure. And again, I'm proud here to introduce Chief Grogan from the Dunwoody Police Department, who will be presenting this award to the City of Milton Police Department tonight. And appreciate you being here.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm representing the Georgia State Law Enforcement Certification Program. I'm also the fourth vice president, the current fourth vice president of the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police. You stole a little bit of my thunder with your comments, but I'll try to skip around that.
You didn't talk me.
The state certification program identifies standards that are felt to be essential to the efficient and effective operation of law enforcement agencies. Participating agencies are expected to implement all applicable standards. Some standards do not apply to all agencies, and waivers may be obtained in some circumstances. The standards provide a detailed blueprint for professional law enforcement. They are credible, realistic, flexible, effective, and under constant review. The standards incorporate contemporary professional thought and practices in Georgia law enforcement, and if followed, ensure the goal of increasing the effectiveness and efficiency of the agency seeking certification. The Milton Police Department has completed five of the six steps in the certification process. The amount of time an agency takes to complete the process varies depending on the amount of work that needs to be accomplished and the time that can be committed to the task of drafting and implementing new procedures. The steps of the certification process are as follows: application, policy development, and compliance, assessment, joint committee review, and award ceremony. Only step six remains, which is ongoing compliance monitoring. As you can see, the state certification program is earned by a law enforcement agency that prepares and follows policies, procedures, and processes I have described. These are considered best practices for Georgia law enforcement. Of more than 700 law enforcement agencies in Georgia, only 103 agencies have achieved this status. By presenting this award, the Georgia State Certification Program recognizes an agency for doing the right things and doing things right. State certification shows that the Milton Police Department has illustrated professionalism in law enforcement. To achieve state certification, the Milton Police Department had to meet 129 standards covering eight areas essential to effective law enforcement. I won't go into all that, because you mentioned some of the things, but additionally, proof of compliance with these standards must be provided to state-certified assessors that make an onsite visit to the agency seeking state certification. All standards that are not waived must be met. The assessor's report is then reviewed by the Joint Review Committee that is made up of representatives from other law enforcement agencies. The Joint Review Committee must approve the report before the agency can achieve state certification. I do want to note, this is the recertification of the Milton Police Department, and really, that's quite an achievement, because when you get your first state certification, basically you go through and you establish your policies, and you say, here's what we're gonna do. This is the standards we're gonna practice. And then, three years later, when you get recertified, you actually have to show the proof that you've been conducting yourself according to what you said you were gonna do. And so, the Milton Police Department did that and did it well. So, it's my pleasure to present Chief Deborah Harrell with this plaque, recognizing this important achievement. She'll come up.
You guys wanna join?
Yeah. Chief?
And I'll go ahead and say it, I'm also gonna present a plaque to Catherine Fies, the Certification Manager, with her diligence and commitment to the state program as well.
You know, I just want to thank our chief here, Chief Harrell, and every one of our police officers and your employees at the department, because I'm saying we're proud. You guys make us look good and keep safe. I never try to miss an opportunity, you know, to tell people, because sometimes I don't think people really appreciate our open safety with police and fire. But, you know, these guys, for what they actually do, deserve 10 times what they make. It's not about the money, but you really gotta think about, these guys wake up every morning to go to work, you know what they may have put their life on the line for somebody that they don't know, and they're in the first line of defense, so, you know, you can't put a price on that, so it definitely comes from the heart of you guys, and we appreciate it. I never do anything wrong, what he loves, man.
We had some of Milton's sponsors respond right across the street. Domestic disturbance.
Are you running around that again?
Not me. Speak into the mic, please. Couple across the street from us.
All right. Okay, added by motion and vote, also would like to do a presentation or give a plaque to Lance Large, but, you know, I want to say a couple words. We, Lance has been with us a couple of years now, and I think he's done a great job. We've enjoyed working with him. He's made, he's been a big part in making a lot of things happen for the city, and really worked hard at it, so we appreciate it, working with you, appreciate your service. You know, again, we're sorry to see you go, but it sounds like you apparently have a great opportunity in moving back, so we're excited for you on that, and you're always welcome. In fact, I'll step down there in a minute, and also, I'm gonna present you with a key to the city, so if you ever get back here, you know, from Virginia, and it's locked, you can get in.
Yeah, I can get in.
So, anyways, if you guys wouldn't mind stepping down here, and we'll present Lance's plaque.
I never knew the key to the city actually worked.
Go ahead and read this first. "To Lance Large, with heartfelt gratitude for your service to the city of Milton, for your tireless efforts as one of the Hilton City Council members, dated October 15, 2013." Thank you, and my pleasure.
future, taking over Lance's position, so. All right, if we can move on to first presentations.
Our first item is consideration of U-13-02 VC-13-03 Deerfield Parkway West Side Crescent Communities, LLC, for a use permit to allow the construction of 256 multifamily residential units and related accessory uses, Section 64, 1839, and a two-part concurrent variance to provide 100% of the site for apartments, Chapter 64, Division 5A, 4 dot 6 dot 6 dot A dot I I. And, second, to delete the requirement to provide a minimum of 300 cubic feet of separate contiguous storage space shall be provided to each dwelling unit, Agenda Item Number Our final first presentation item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 6, Administration Financial Management Program, Section 2, 626 A2, to provide for piggybacking from contracts of other public entities, Agenda Item Number 13-232.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the reading of the first presentation.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Luss, with a second from Councilmember Hewitt.
Would you allow just a quick bit of discussion on this topic before you go and add something to the record that we talked about earlier?
Sure, be glad to, Chris.
There's one, too, in this first item under first presentation, the U-13-02 VC-13-03 in that packet that advertised was a fiscal impact model, and the fiscal impact model that was included actually had a calculation error in it. When it showed years to complete, the staff indicated the year it would potentially be complete, which was 2015. The formula calculated as a project would take 2015 years to complete, as opposed to two, so I just want to put that on the record tonight. That's been corrected, we just couldn't get it corrected in your packet quick enough, but because this will become a further consideration for the next meeting, we want to make sure that it travels with the correct information the whole way through. The form has been changed, and the advertising of the next meeting will be correct. Thank you.
Okay. All right, you got that statement on the record, and then have a motion of second, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, tonight, we don't have any public hearings or zines, so we'll move on, move on to unfinished business. If our city clerk could please call the first unfinished business item, first and only.
First item is consideration of T-13-02 VC-13-05 13700 Highway 9 New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, also known as AT&amp;T Mobility, for consideration of an ordinance to increase the height of the tower from 175 feet to 185 feet, and a two-part concurrent variance as follows: first, reduce tower setbacks to allow existing tower to be set back 26 feet from eastern property line and 20 feet from northern property line, all measured from center line of tower, Section 54-6D1. And, second, to reduce the 20-foot required landscape strip to 10 feet, currently existing, Section 54-6E. This is Agenda Item Number 13-216. First presentation was heard at the September 16th, 2013 Regular Council Meeting. We do have a public comment for this.
Okay.
Can we go ahead with the staff presentation first?
Yeah.
The public comment is the applicant. Do you have questions?
Okay. Yeah, we'll go ahead and do the presentation, then.
I'd like to introduce Ms. Kathy Field.
And I'm actually gonna steal the thunder, well, and take it back to our campus tonight. So, Mayor and Council, this is the first opportunity for you to consider a power modification test upon the ordinance that we adopted in the recent months, that incentivizes co-location in the form of either increasing the height of a currently existing tower, or alternatively, removing a tower and replacing the one in its designated location, so long as that sort of sort of criteria exists. The applicant in this case has demonstrated that there are coverage issues, as you can see in the propagation maps that were distributed in the packet. In fact, I have firsthand knowledge that the principal that came from high school said that there's limited coverage in the lobby of the high school, because the tower that exists between the high school and the existing tower has a water tank between it. So, the request here tonight is to increase the size of the tower that already exists, that exists at 175 feet. They're seeking to go to 185 feet, so a 10-foot extension. The two variance requests that you need are simply to maintain the tower in almost the condition that exists today, even if it's a legally non-conforming tower today, in that the tower was built, and these two variances would have been needed if it would have been built under our code. So, they're not seeking to really increase those variances just to make them comport with the increase of the height of 10 feet, so these variances are driven out of the fact that the tower goes up 10 feet, the distance bumper requirements become more in all directions. So, staff's recommendation would be that you approve this tonight. It is our belief that this would prohibit us from having another tower application come in, and the applicant to show that in their packet, not to say that a new tower application will approve or not approve, but this is simply a 10-foot height requirement that will eliminate us having to even try. This tower does not become lit because of this increase, and really, the practical reality is, to anybody other than who might know it was gonna go up 10 feet, you probably aren't gonna even notice it. I'll be happy to answer any questions, if you have any questions, if you have any applicant question, we've got a representative here.
Okay. I'll open up first. Are there any questions for Chris on this? Okay. If there's a question, I'd certainly be glad to let the applicant speak, if you'd like, still. Okay?
And this is Melissa Perrin-Yott.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is--
Excuse me, Melissa, go ahead.
Oh, my name is Melissa Perrin-Yott, with the law firm of Holt, Nez, Zadkoff, and Wasserman, 100 Galleria Parkway, Suite 1800, Atlanta, Georgia. I had the pleasure this evening of representing AT&amp;T in connection with this application. There really is not more to add, we are only asking to increase the height of the tower by 10 feet, and to allow it to maintain in its current existing conditions, which would require the variances. And additionally, we just wanted to thank the city and the city staff for all of their work and cooperation in working on a new wireless ordinance this summer, and we're very pleased to be the first application to go through this process. Be happy to answer any questions the city council may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right. You want to make a motion? No other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item 13-216.
Second. I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Koontz. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we can move on to new business. Sudi?
Our next item is consideration of a waiver of conflict, affirmatively waiving any actual or potential conflict related to Gerard and Davis, LLP's former service to the Charter Commission, upon which Mr. Wallace was a member, and Gerard and Davis, LLP's present representation of the city against New Providence, LLC, an entity with whom Ron Wallace may have an interest and otherwise directs Gerard and Davis, LLP, to continue advancing the city's interests in condemnation case, City of Milton versus 0.430 acres of land et al. Civil action file number 2013 CV-227053. This is Agenda Item Number 13-233, and we have Mr. Chris Hamilton from Gerard and Davis.
Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, I'm pinching for Mr. Gerard, who I understand is in traffic right now, so with that being said, this is just simply a waiver of conflict. We want the city and council to know that Mr. Wallace was on the Charter Commission, and we represented the Charter Commission. Mr. Wallace may have an interest in New Providence, LLC's interested land that was condemned in this particular case, and we would request that the waiver of conflict be granted to the extent there is any conflict.
Okay, is there any questions on that? Again, and I applaud Gerard and Davis for this, he'd be very conservative in making sure that there is no conflict, but bringing this out, but I don't think there's--
Are we sure he's capable of filling in for Ken without a bowtie on?
I'd have to do it. Maybe more capable.
The rest of us are not allowed to wear bowties.
So, just be sure and remind him that Kevin wore bowtie before him, and that he's copying Kevin.
I will be glad to do that.
Okay, we'll, I'll take, open that for a motion.
Make a motion to approve Agenda 13-233.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Hewitt, second from Councilmember Large. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, Sudi, you'll call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve the submission of the letter of interest for the congestion mitigation and air quality program to the Atlanta Regional Commission in partnership with Alpharetta, Georgia. Agenda Item Number 13-234, Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and Council, I've had the opportunity to talk individually with most of you about this topic. This was one that was brought to us by the City of Alpharetta. This is a grant that they seek to apply for that would finish off the funding for the Windward Parkway Phase 2, I believe is what it's called. We'd kind of candidly call it the Triple Lefts off of 400 Parkway, the exit ramp from 400 northbound, and increasing then three lanes west to Deerfield Parkway, where then the one lane would turn north to Deerfield Parkway. We had the presentation from the North Fulton CID--
We had the presentation from the North Fulton CID, where it showed that that project was just short of a five million dollar project, there had been some funding secured, both the CID funding and at the state level, Alpharetta kind of took the lead to find this grant, and when they were just about to approve it at their council meeting, they said, well, I wonder if Milton would have interest in partnering with us, we have a better opportunity to get grants when you apply regionally, we've seen that happen in an assortment of reasons, or a certain ways, and they called and said, you know, would you have interest in partnering with us? Our public works director, and I looked at the traffic data that we had at our disposal, and that was traffic that would count what traffic turned right on Deerfield Parkway, what went south on West Side Parkway, versus what went straight through the intersection, and tried to get some type of a sense as to whether or not we would have actual Milton impact in this project. We believe that there is, and that we believe that there are people that turn left off of Winward Parkway, or off of four hundred onto Winward Parkway, that are either intending on having their destination be Milton, or their business be in Milton. I don't know, and the data really doesn't support a fifty-fifty split, but the data would support, if you all would support it, that we would be willing to split in the matching funds on a sixty-forty basis. That would cause this project to have a Milton match of two hundred and thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. Pretty reasonable investment on a five million dollar traffic project that will help our business owners and our citizens get into Milton quicker. Anytime we can do these enhancements, they just get better, we have a better chance of getting it, if we are partnered with another city. Recognizing tonight, all you're doing is authorizing a letter of interest, there are still multiple steps, we have to pass this first phase to be able to even get into the phase that we can actually submit an application. So, you're not agreeing to spend these dollars tonight, you're just agreeing to allow us to continue to pursue it jointly, there will be opportunities, and it will have to be back in front of the council, if in fact we are a successful recipient, if we're not, then this is just one of those things that we tried and didn't get. But it would close and complete the funding for this project, so if this grant were to be applied for, and we were lucky enough to receive it, that project would fund, and it would become a real project with available funds. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but that's what this agenda item is. Alpharetta has already adopted this, subject to your adoption tonight, if you choose not to adopt it, then they likely will adopt it in a different form. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No, but I think this is a good opportunity to collaborate with Alpharetta, I'm sure we would need their help down the road in similar projects.
Yeah, it's been a good working relationship on this type of stuff. All right, if no questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve the submission of the letter of interest for the congestion mitigation and air quality program to the Atlanta Regional Commission in partnership with Alpharetta, Georgia, agenda item number thirteen, two three four.
Second.
I have a motion by council member Coons, second by council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a settlement from consent final order and judgment of the condemnation of zero point four three zero acres of right-of-way, and zero point two nine six acres of permanent construction and maintenance easement, and zero point zero one nine acres of temporary construction easement on parcel four from New Providence LLC and Arthur E. Ferdinand as Fulton County Tax Commissioner in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. This is agenda item number thirteen, two three five, Mr. Chris Hamilton.
Again, thank you, mayor and city council, I appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight. This is dovetails into number one, which was the waiver before, after taking some direction from you all in a previous meeting, we went, and along with great efforts by Carter Lucas and Chris Lagerblum, hammered out what we believe to be a good and fair resolution of this condemnation case, and it's before you now for approval, and so that's agenda item number three, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this?
Is this our last parcel on that intersection?
It is, and I wanted to outline kind of what you're, it's what we're seeking your approval for tonight, this is, is the final land acquisition of the Birmingham, Providence, New Providence Road. We did have authority from you all on an executive session, we'd have to ratify it publicly to get this thing settled for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we've been able to do that with a settlement document that eliminates any future on the hook for Milton, so to speak, and there's a whole sort of, assortment of things that can go on with the property when you, when you try to settle it, where you protect against future conditions, and we can't buy any future rentals, so the documents you have in front of you is one that allows this thing to settle at this point with good assurances of us to them and them to us, and hopefully makes this a done deal so that we can move on and start the construction project.
Okay, any other questions? None, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve a settlement from consent final order and judgment of the condemnation of zero point four three zero acres of right-of-way, and zero point two nine or six acres of permanent construction and maintenance easement, and zero point zero one nine or acres of temporary construction easement on parcel four from New Providence LLC and Arthur E. Ferdinand as Fulton County Tax Commissioner in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, agenda item number one, three dash two three five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by council member Loes, second for approval, council member Thurman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, the city clerk, please say on the next final new business item.
Our final item this evening is consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the City of Milton Design Review Board, by appointing a board member for District One post two, agenda item number thirteen, two three six, council member Bert Hewitt.
I'd like to ask y'all's consideration for an appointment on the board, our design review board, I'd first like to thank Carl Hayes, who was the previous appointment, and he's going to move on to brighter and better things, but Richie Johnson has agreed to take, to take his seat on this board. Richie's a native Georgian and a graduate of University of Tennessee Knoxville, where he earned a BA in political science. With a decade of experience in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors, he currently works in telecommunications, he's active in multiple chambers of commerce across the state, and serves on the Crab Apple Community Association Board of Directors. Richie is married to his wife, Allison, a first grade teacher, and I'll add, too, that she wears the right color of orange in the family, she wears, she wears orange and blue, she's an undergraduate. They live in Crab Apple, and they have a newborn son, trips about, what, six, seven weeks old, and they attend Alpharetta First United Methodist Church, so I'd like to ask y'all's consideration for Richie to join the design review board.
Okay, I'll open that up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, appointing a member to the City of Milton Design Review Board by appointing a member for District One post two, agenda item number thirteen dash two three six.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion, council member Thurman, second by council member Coons. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We have the paperwork here, we'll go ahead and swear Richie in, I do want to say, you know, not only to you, Richie, thank you for stepping up, but everybody else that has, that's one of the things that totally makes being the City of Milton such a better place than before we were a city, and just a part of the county, is all the volunteers and residents and citizens who get involved and help out and all that, so it makes a huge difference, and so we certainly do appreciate all your time, so if you wouldn't mind standing, stepping up, Richie, we'll, I'll swear at you, I mean, I'll swear again.
[laughing]
The design review board member.
The design review board member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the constitution.
As well as the constitution.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States.
And the United States.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sign here. If you want to go ahead and post your home phone number, and all that, if anybody has any problems in it this way, I'm kidding.
Is it, Will?
Okay, that's about it, we'll move on to reports, I was out of town this weekend visiting my son, his first year at college, but I hear the Crab Apple Fest, and everything went very well, and well-attended, and all that, so thank you for everybody that had a hand in that, it took, it took a lot of people, a lot of work to pull that off, but it sounds like it turned out really good.
It was a very nice event, I think it worked out very well combining the roundup with the Crab Apple Festival, and the weather cooperated, and I think it was a great event, and everyone had a good time, and they cleaned it up pretty quickly.
Except the traffic.
Mayor.
Lance?
Okay, so this is going to be my last meeting here, and really, I love Milton, I've been really sincerely enjoyed being on council here, and serving with everyone I'm looking at right now, and I mean everyone, I have to admit, I did that to endure Matt's Notre Dame stuff, but, but sometimes there's an upside and downside to everything, but it has been a great experience, and I think we have a wonderful group, I'm glad to see my good friend Rick Moore will be stepping into my, I'll leave my shoes here under the desk, okay, you can step into them.
The smell.
Might want some odor eaters or something, but, but it has been a great experience, and Milton is truly, truly a special place, and really, there isn't, and my lovely wife out down there, sitting beside my good friend Rick, is, will agree with me that we, I don't think we'll find a place as nice as this to live in, in Virginia, or anyplace, actually, this has been, hands down, a great community, a lot of things have been accomplished, I'm really glad to see this little park under construction down here, it's a great thing, and I'd really be looking, I'll actually be watching from afar, if not closer by, to see things progress here in the community, and the city grows, and so, anyway, yeah, little something to remind everybody, leave you a little parting gift. Two hundred of these. I was gonna give them to, like, homeless shelters. I think these are the, these are the larges, these are the triple Xs.
They're all larges.
Oh, yeah, these are all large, but that's a, for some of the big guys here.
Mr. Burley's small, right?
Ah, yeah, I think Matt, you have become larger since being on council.
I'm sure, thank you.
And then I've got, the, 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 the two point O, the two point O model came out after that, just in a mayor, and I, I will, I will send you all, here, here you go, I will send you all, and you can wear this, like a night shirt, Parker probably loved that.
Sure, he will.
But, it's great, I will send you all something, a souvenir from the great state of Virginia.
A ham.
A ham, yeah, send you a Christmas ham, so to replace me, so, anyway, it's been a wonderful experience, and I'll be leaving tonight, actually, to be starting my job later this week down there, and Karen Lee will be leaving, hopefully after we close on the house at the end of the month, and we'll be down there trying to find something, not nearly as nice as this, but we will find something, but thank you, thank you for everything.
Congratulations, and, you know, everything, and we will wish you luck.
Yeah, thanks.
And Karen Lee also.
Thanks.
Now, Lance, have you practiced saying, well, back in Milton, this is the way we did things?
That's right, I will, I will, I'll definitely do that.
All right, if there's nothing else on council, I'll move over to city staff, and we'll report.
Just a couple of quick things. Yes, great, appreciate seeing many of you at the Crab Apple Fest, good event, great turnout, I do want to give a special thanks to the staff and the Crab Apple Community Association that put it together, they worked hours and hours and hours, I saw something really neat yesterday afternoon, as well as I drove through Crab Apple about six o'clock on a Sunday evening, as I saw one of our private partners, an op tech, had actually mobilized a crew to remove signs and hay bales and stuff because the forecast was for rain overnight, they didn't want it all to be a mess this morning, and that's just not something that you typically see, and I talk all the time around here how we happen to work for the government, but we're not government workers, and, you know, that's just something that was really kind of cool to see, as I happened through Crab Apple on a Sunday night, that we had our extended staff out there working to get the place cleaned up for this morning, so, all in all, just really appreciative of how that event turned out, and if you get any complaints, because I was out there directing traffic, a little bit of my background came up a couple of times, as I was, you know, to convince people that it wasn't all about them on Sunday morning, so if anybody gets any complaints, you can forward them to the mayor, you'll launch an investigation. Couple of things, I sent you a pretty important email tonight, it's one that would be protected by the attorney club privilege, I'm not going to discuss it here, but I would ask you to check your email tonight to understand some breaking news that happened today, as well as to let you know that we routinely had executive sessions to talk about land acquisition, most of our right-of-way is done, and the other land acquisition that you know that's pending, we're still in the due diligence phase, many of those steps are moving forward, but there's not enough to report on tonight that we would actually go into executive session to do it. One thing I want to leave you with, and if I forget this, Jim will probably come out of his chair in the audience, is we're right now at the time that we need to start ordering some signs for this park up at the corner, so that we can have them here as we unveil it and open it up on Veterans Day. I talked to each of you individually about what your thoughts were on the name, and I've kind of taken the liberty to slice and dice a little bit based upon certain council members' feelings about the word Deerfield versus others about the word veteran, about others, with other certain words that might not work well for us in the future, and I'd like to throw at you tonight, the idea of Freedom Park, and see what you think of that. The flags will be there, representing, or memorializing each of the armed forces, there will be a peace pole in this park, many of the other words that went along with those types of images, for one reason or another, didn't sit well with somebody for an assortment of reasons, Freedom Park is not one that has been objected to, I don't necessarily need a head nod tonight, but I would ask you to consider that, contemplate it, as to whether or not you just absolutely hate it in the next twenty-four to forty-eight hours, let's say forty-eight hours, if you absolutely hate it Wednesday before the end of the day, if you send me something or call me to let me know that that's a non-starter for you, I'd appreciate it, otherwise, we do need to move forward with getting the signs ordered, so the park can open up on Veterans Day. That's all I have, unless I owe anybody's answer, if you want to ask questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's kind of our status of where we are.
Okay. Not, I will conclude this meeting and hope for a motion for, to conclude the meeting.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second motion.
Motion, a second, we adjourn our meeting, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.